All right, good afternoon. Can you hear me? Nope, still not on. There we go. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to your Public Works Gang Reduction Committee. I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Buscagno, Rue, and Rodriguez. Councilwoman Martinez will not be able to join us today. We'll take public comment a little bit later. Unless there's an objection from my colleagues, well, actually, we've got to take public comment. Do we have any public comment? No, on items?
Are you talking, Fred?
I was going to do the consent items, but, you know, before we move to con-
You could just take item one or item two. Just take the comment.
Okay, we have one public comment on item two?
Same as the other.
Sorry, folks, the technology is acting up on us here.
Do you have three gap bars for general public comment?
We'll do general public comment at the end, but any on the items?
So if you're going to take item two, or if you're going to do where you can just request.
Okay, so we're going to move forward. We have, one of my colleagues has to leave early today, so we're going to move to item two to get us started. And, great, we have one public comment item on that, on item two. We'll start with that, and then we'll move straight into that item, and then we'll go back up to the top of the agenda. So would you please read item two into the record, Mr. Espinoza?
Item two are reports from the city administrative officer in response to the motion from councilmembers Buscagno and Blumenfield relative to a pilot program to employ homeless individuals for the loose litter cleanup program. This was heard and approved at the May 18, 2018 meeting at the Energy, Climate Change, and Environmental Justice Committee. Also, this is referred to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Great, thank you so much. We have one public comment from Simboya Wright. Mr. Wright, welcome. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. Well, I'm Simboya Wright, representing and a member of the Coalition of the Los Angeles City Unions. This item right here is really a no-brainer. We have the Target Local Hiring Program that the city agreed to, and we have been working hard side by side. Actually, I did a job fair with Council District Eight, Marquise Dawson Harris, and we are trying to make sure that we can get people hired into a career, not just a job, because the city of Los Angeles is a career. So we understand, with the Target Local Hiring, it has on, as one of the programs, to pull from Chrisless, the program that helps employ homeless people. We want people to have a career, not a job. We don't want them to say, "Oh, I can go to work," and then the next two days or a couple of weeks or a month or so not have a job. We want them to be able to have benefits, healthcare, be able to not be homeless, and get a home to live in. So I ask you to most definitely support the Coalition of L.A. City Unions and go through the Target Local Hiring and not through this other process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So we'd like to invite Mr. Wilson Poon from CAO's office to the table.
Good afternoon. Wilson Poon with the CAO's office. Item two are two reports relative to a pilot program to employ homeless individuals to do loose litter cleanup program. And the first report was prepared back in May, and this presents a framework for the pilot program where we looked at different programs across the country. We also looked locally at, you know, the OCB contracts as well as the bids, and we found out that most of the bids contract with Chrisless, so we started talking with Chrisless. We met with them, we toured their facilities, they described how their process works, kind of the services they offer as well, and kind of, we asked them for a proposal, and this is the proposal you see before you. It's basically six cleanup crews, one assigned to each of the six sanitation district yards. We would deploy them based on clean stat data to areas of the city where there's high loose litter or high weeds, and each crew is made up of one supervisor as well as five labors, and the cost is about $2.95 million. There's a lot of one-time costs as well for equipment, supplies as well, and of course, benefits for these individuals. This is a transitional program, so it's 36 positions, but people will come in and out of the program as they promote out to higher level, higher-paying jobs. And Chrisless expects about 250, maybe 300 people to go through this program. This is very similar to a program that Councilwoman Rodriguez introduced back when she was a board member with OCB, and we have one of these OCB crews accompany each of the clean stat teams, and they come by after the clean stat teams go through, and they do a lot of loose litter cleanup as well. So the second report that we prepared was released last week, and it provides some updates on the funding source. When we first prepared the report back in May, the mayor's proposed budget did not include any funding for this program, but through the efforts of Councilman Buscagno and Councilman Blumenfield, council was able to provide $10 million in the unappropriated balance for various homeless-related programs. This pilot was one of those identified for that $10 million. We also explored the HEAT funds. This is the $85 million state grant from the Homeless Emergency Aid Program that we received back in October. However, we, you know, we talked with staff from our office, and most of the HEAT funds have been kind of accounted for. We don't know if there'll be any available, so that's why we're not really recommending HEAT, but HEAT would be the preferred funding source since it is a one-time fund, and there are very strict spending deadlines for those funds. We also explored the option of if we could front fund the program costs with U.B. money and maybe having the HEAT funds kind of reimburse on the back end, but again, talking with staff from our office, that was not an option as well because, I guess, the grant requirements require you to directly spend from the program and not to reimburse. The other thing that our denim kind of addresses is just the implementation of the contract. At first, we thought maybe OCB would be a better administrator, but we talked with sanitation, and we figured that sanitation would be the better administrator for the contract since they just have so much experience and knowledge. They administer tons of contracts annually, and they have the staff for it, so that's also a difference that we talked in the denim. And then, the other two issues we address in the denim are just concerns that were raised in the Energy, Climate Change, and Environmental Justice Committee. Councilman Corretts had some, I mean, Councilman Corretts expressed a strong interest to see this pilot program incorporated into the TLH. Basically, if you could have an individual that successfully completes the pilot, immediately transition into the Target Local Hire program into full-time city jobs, and that would basically require a policy change on the Target Local Hire program. The Target Local Hire program was kind of designed to offer equal and fair opportunities for individuals in underserved communities who could be homeless, could also be transgender, or also could be, you know, have a former gang members or different, there's about, I think, 10 or 12 different criteria for what you qualify for the Target Local Hire program. So if that is the direction the council wants to go, it would require a policy change. A lot of these positions, remember, are unskilled entry-level positions, so it would kind of go against the spirit of the Target Local Hire program if you are to give higher consideration for individuals with certain experience or certain types of background or knowledge. The other concern we tried to address that Councilman Krikorian brought up in the last committee was the $3 million price tag, so we've presented some more charts in the report to kind of simplify some of the data. Again, we looked at other contracts that Chrisless administrate, that we have with Chrisless, particularly the one with Caltrans that's administered by the mayor's office, about the same price tag, $3.15 million, six crews, they produce, they do a lot of freeway shoulder cleanups, vegetation removal, that type of stuff. We also looked at some of the contracts they have with the bids for maintenance services and cleaning services. We also looked at the contract they have with the bin, the property storage facility in Skid Row, and basically saw that all the rates are the same. These individuals are getting minimum wage, they're getting benefits, and it's very much the same proposal, the same framework. So I believe we have representatives from Chrisless here who could also are available to answer any questions you guys may have.
Great, we're welcome to have the Chrisless representatives come up as well. Certainly, as they're coming up, we do want to know about the, you know, the Target Local Hire issue which was raised, although honestly, I'm a little disappointed it's being raised right now. My staff reached out back early November several weeks ago to Labor, they just showed me these emails that they sent to you guys, and we didn't hear anything until just now. So that's a little disappointing, but nonetheless, it's a real issue, and we, everybody on this podium cares deeply about Target Local Hire. It's a priority for, and I'm pretty confident I speak for everybody here, it's a priority for all of us. So we want to make sure that this program does not compete or interfere with that in any way, and it's not meant to. It is meant to be a very different program with a very different purpose, which is, the biggest purpose of it is to try to take folks who are homeless, who may not even be anywhere near the job stream, and give them a little bit of dignity, and, you know, as an effort, and work being one of those things, as an effort to try to get them a little bit stabilized. But we have someone from Chrisless, maybe, and I want to give you a chance to speak about the program in general, and, you know, maybe tell us also about the criteria of how you guys choose someone who would be a good candidate for this program and how it may differ from your relationship with the Target Local Hire program.
Sure, so thanks for having me. My name is Trevor Kale. I'm vice president of Chrisless. Basically, we've got three centers in Los Angeles, one in Pacoima in the San Fernando Valley, one in Santa Monica, it's just out of the city limits, and one in downtown Los Angeles here on Fifth Street, and we are open to any individual who comes to us. Oftentimes, those individuals are homeless, ex-offenders, haven't worked in a number of years. We have a high amount of people who maybe have never worked and have nothing that they can put on a resume because they've either been homeless or incarcerated for a number of years. And the way that we identify individuals to work in our work program is they meet one-on-one with the case manager who assesses their readiness to gain competitive employment in just the regular jobs marketplace. If we don't feel like they're competitive when we're working with them, we will refer them to one of our businesses to do cleanup work, either with the Business Improvement District cleanups or the Caltrans program that Wilson had spoken about. We're also involved in the Target Local Hire program. Those jobs are, that would be a dream job for each and every one of the Chrisless men and women who come. We hope to eventually, one day, get them into that, into jobs with the city, but where our men and women are at when they come to us, they're not quite there yet. So we offer supportive employment under our supervision to give them the services and the support that they need to hold down this job with us and prepare them for that entry-level next job. As people are graduating through a program, they can stay with us for a term of up to 12 months. Towards the end of their term with us, we're doing, we're working with employers, including the city, but employers in private industry as well, to accept the graduates of our program who are then ready to have a, what we'll call, like, an outside job. I'm sure if that addresses you.
No, so you're saying it's two distinct pools of people?
No, I don't, I think when people come to us, we make an assessment if they're ready to start job searching right now, and we can link them into private employment if they're presentable and if there is something that they have, maybe, maybe they have some recent work experience that we can work with, or their soft skills are such that we think we can put them in front of a private employer, and they have a good shot of retaining, of gaining employment. This year alone, we'll hire 1,500 people who we've assessed aren't quite ready for that step, so we'll hire them into our program for up to 12 months while they build up that self-esteem and stability, and towards the end of their time with us, then we start putting them in front of employers.
Okay, and how many, you said it's about 200 to 300 people per year. What do you expect in terms of the turnover rate for the program? How do you get that number of people? Is that a rotation, or how does that work?
Generally, we keep people for anywhere between three and six months is our most successful window. Usually, what people need is to come in, stabilize. That first three months is really critical for us to retain them. We don't, we're not able to retain everyone. Showing up to work every day is not easy, and not everyone is quite ready for that. So we're going to give 300 people the opportunity to do that. We imagine that 50 to 60% of them will be successful and find jobs beyond this program, but there's also 40% of the people typically who maybe have to cycle through again or maybe come back to us in three months when they are ready.
Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your leadership on this. Happy to lead this effort. This is an idea that came to me during my affiliation with National League of Cities. Not a new idea. Other cities across the country has found their way to find job opportunities for the We all know we're currently facing a homelessness crisis of unprecedented proportions in our city. Each district, as we're hearing, is quickly responding by offering and identifying sites for both temporary and long-term supportive housing, but in addition to housing, nothing is more effective at preventing homelessness than a job. And knowing this, happy to partner with my colleagues on this, we put our heads together to come up with an idea that if approved and if successful after its one-year pilot program, could create an ongoing pipeline of jobs for homeless individuals in our city. We have heard loud and clear from the Department of Sanitation that there is a significant need for weed abatement and loose litter cleanup in our city. We have identified a gap in city services that could be filled by homeless individuals, so we decided that our greatest need is proactive block-by-block litter abatement, which is currently a reactive service in the city that is focused almost exclusively on bulk item and illegal dumping. And oftentimes, colleagues, we hear from our constituents that we need to do a better job of picking up litter in our neighborhoods. So just, I want to address some, briefly, some of the concerns raised today by, I believe it's Mr. Wright. Thank you so much for your service to our city. Appreciate your presence here, but I believe that we need to address his concern and concerns of our labor brothers and sisters. First, this will not take away any jobs from existing city employees and contractors. It's entirely a new program that would make our streets, sidewalks, and other public spaces cleaner. As far as our targeted local hire goals, as mentioned in the report, and I do want to thank Mr. Poon for working with Dennis and Laura and my team, I really appreciate the report that's before us. Individuals who are placed in the proposed litter abatement pilot program would also be added to the pool of names. So what we're doing here, we're actually increasing the pool, the targeted local hire program, especially those who need the most help, the most vulnerable in our city. And that program is currently operating on a lottery system. If an individual's name is polled from the targeted local hire, then that person would leave the litter abatement pilot for the targeted local hire job. Isn't that what we want in our city? We want, we embrace the fact that we live in a city that's full of opportunities and a city that embraces second chances. So yes, this proposed one-year pilot program includes 36 full-time positions, but it's also important to note, as Mr. Poon indicated, that we're going to be cycling through individuals who are homeless, which can estimate, the pilot program could employ a total of 250 to 300 individuals who are homeless today. Chrisless and the CAO's office provided us with the estimate of total impacted homeless individuals in the first CAO report, and just to reiterate, this is an opportunity to employ homeless individuals. Oftentimes, in my experiences with LAPD as a police officer and even more so as a council member, we hear from people living in the streets, this is, you know, I ask, "What can we do to help you get back on your feet?" And that number-one response is, "I need a job." In a time where, oftentimes in a big city like Los Angeles, we tend to advance our efforts by analysis paralysis, but sometimes we just have to try something new. Let's give this a shot. And if approved, this pilot program would be a critical piece of our city's strategy to alleviate homelessness in our city. And we have the power here now to provide hundreds of jobs for the most vulnerable who needs an opportunity to get back on their feet and to provide the dignity of work and a steady paycheck. So I thank you, Mr. Chair, for moving on this. I understand this also has to go to budget and finance, and we're hopeful that we move forward and stop talking about this and let's put our homeless people to work.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question as it relates to, well, first of all, I want to say that I'm happy to see that this is a proposal that's gained momentum and is moving forward, and I think it's really important, not just because of the opportunity that it provides for this particular population and demographic of individual that we need to meet, but more so because having been a very strong advocate of expanding the resources to do this very type of work, the litter and weed abatement part of the quality-of-life issues that our constituents are affected by every single day, it's an important part of that suite of services that we provide in the city of Los Angeles and to help address it proactively. That said, when I look at the budget and I think about what OCB has allocated, you're talking about close to, you know, about a third or close to, I think it's about a third of what OCB's overall budget is for the contract work that we already deploy, and when it was expanded, when OCB used to have the full suite of services, it used to include the small litter and weed abatement service. When it was expanded, they used to do bulky items and all that as well. What was the reasoning behind not allowing OCB to continue to just kind of expand the suite of service but to address this particular population? Because this is, you know, when we talk about that money, this could actually complement the work that is already being done on OCB's side rather than kind of segregating it into this new, into having sanitation maintained, number one. Number two, also because when I think about how we manage the expectations of contractors, OCB already does that in terms of helping to validate and kind of be consistent in terms of how we document that the work is actually being completed. So what is the reasoning behind not having OCB manage this particular proposal?
Right, so the OCB contractors, I think, targeted different demographics of individuals, whereas Chrisless, I think, targets mainly the homeless, which is why we went with Chrisless, the OCB. I mean, we could, if that is the council's decision, have OCB administer the contracts. I mean, we figured that, you know, talking to sanitation, they just had more staff and people who have experience doing this work, and I think when you get multiple agencies involved, it becomes complicated, you know? One department is paying the invoices, the other one is the one deploying the crews and so forth, so they're just-
But the way OCB derives, like many of their court appointees, for example, would be no different than if they got it from Chrisless, right? Because you're basically kind of helping to do this kind of appointment. They're being, they're coming from Chrisless, correct? Because you're being vetted and kind of prepared through Chrisless and then kind of extended to provide this opportunity for them to work on these crews. So why wouldn't we use that as an opportunity to facilitate it to the existing OCB contractors?
I mean, I can't speak for OCB. I think I saw Paul in the back.
Is Paul Roach?
Yeah, I think I, maybe Paul can speak to the OCB contractors.
Paul Roach, Director of the Office of Community Beautifulcation. As Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned, we do have 12 different nonprofit organizations that, in addition to doing the graffiti abatement, are currently doing litter cleanup, weed abatement type of work. Several of them do utilize local homeless or formerly homeless personnel, and I think have expressed interest in any type of expanded program where they could utilize these homeless folks, individuals as well, to supplement the crews that are already out there doing that type of work. OCB would be interested in, you know, at least exploring the various options involving, you know, current nonprofit community-based organizations as well as other ones that may want to come on board.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I first want to say this to Councilmember Buscagno for leading this effort. I mean, this is a great program to try to reintegrate and employ homeless individuals to beautify our city streets, and I know Chrisless well, and I think Chrisless is a great organization who's proven themselves to be a strong champion in this fight. And I'm, but I'm also very cognizant of our goals to try to boost the hiring of city personnel, especially for Bureau of Public Works, and targeted local hire is something that I very much support. So we need to make sure that this program both, and as stated by both you, Mr. Chairman, and Councilman Buscagno, that this program both provides transitional jobs and protects full-time city positions to boost our workforce. So I just want to make sure, I know we talked about it, got a couple of answers here, but I want to make sure that this program does not, and I know there was a proposal in one of the other committees to try to integrate this program with Target Local Hire, but I want to make sure that this program does not impact Target Local Hire because there are, these programs are mutually exclusive, and it does, and the fact that we will not displace the volume of personnel already engaged with Target Local Hire. So my question is, could you, the CAO, I'm assuming, could you tell us more about the responsibilities or duties that these transitional workers will be tasked with, the actual duties?
I'm happy to assist answering as well. Basically, on what we were proposing was that there would be a crew assigned to each of the six different sanitation waste sheds who would then basically direct our duties for the day. So generally, there'll be a supervisor and five labors, and it would be similar to the work that we do for business improvement districts right now, which would be loose litter pickup, graffiti abatement, bulk item removal, weeding, basically, they're directing us daily, and that's, those are the duties we typically have when we're out cleaning a street scape.
So to the CAO, would this program impact, well, will this, will this program impact our progress in hiring more city personnel? I mean, do any of these jobs here affect any of our current city employee jobs?
So I think Councilman Buscagno hit it right on the, hit the nail right on its head where he said, basically, you're increasing the pool of potential candidates that can enter the Target Local Hire program, and that's what you are doing here because they are feeders into these work source centers that refer people to the Target Local Hire program. So this is basically 36 or if I want to say 300 people that could now potentially go into the Target Local Hire program before they, there wouldn't be, before they, right, is that correct? Yeah, before that, there wouldn't be that opportunity, so.
Well, did you say earlier that in order for that, exactly what you said, to happen, we have to legislate that, change this program to integrate with Target Local Hire?
No, I think, so what I was saying before was if council wanted to give higher consideration for just homeless individuals for the Target Local Hire program, that would be a policy change for, you know?
So if I may, Mr. Rue, if we give priority to homeless individuals that gang inter, that formerly incarcerated, formerly gang affiliated, then we would seek the policy change, correct?
Correct. So you, yeah, you would be prioritizing homeless individuals over former gang and so forth, and the other criteria that-
It's impacted disadvantage, but in this, what we have before us, a homeless individual will be in the general pool, correct?
Correct, correct.
Right, to be very clear, this is not changing that policy in terms of-
Right, to be very clear, this is not changing that policy in terms of what Target Local Hire, the priorities, all the categories of Target Local Hire are completely not affected by this program. It's not going to be changing the priorities.
Correct.
As I understand, you're saying, we could, if we wanted to as a council, come forward and rejigger the priorities for Target Local Hire, but that is not what this program is doing or designed to do or intended to do. It's, the way that you've designed it, it's really, it's a separate track that maybe will get some folks who wouldn't even be eligible for Target Local Hire who are sort of at a less functional place to be able to get to a place of basic functionality that then maybe after they go through this program, they could then enter the Target Local Hire program. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Ru, I didn't mean to cut you off. The floor is yours, go ahead.
You know, and I know this is a time-sensitive matter because this is our last committee meeting before the end of the year. So has the CAO, have you already spoken with the Target Local Hire, the committee that was formed?
No, I haven't.
And there is some time in the sense that then from here, it's going to go to budget before it comes to the council. So we can, you know, even if we move it out of here with the recommendations, it still has a few more places where it could be tweaked before we then, of course, all get a chance to vote on it in council. Mr. Buscano, did you comment on that?
If I may, would you go to the Target Local Hire Committee if you're seeking a change in the policy?
Right, if you propose.
You would, right?
The working group, right.
You would go to the working group, but you're not recommending any changes, correct?
That's correct.
I think the confusion here is, I mean, I, from what the CAO and departments are telling me, I mean, I feel comfortable with it, but I just feel that there has been a lack of communication. And if you could possibly, I don't know if we have to formally direct it with an amendment, but if we could, in the process, before it comes to council, if the CAO could reach out with the coalition that's working on the Target Local Hire to make sure you answer all the questions and clarify, because I think once that's done, I think that'll clear up a lot of the air. Because it looks like from what I'm hearing, it's not going to affect it, so.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. Colleagues, any additional questions or comments? Ms. Rodriguez?
Yeah, so just in looking at some of the associated costs, I guess, again, colleagues, my only kind of comment going back to reflecting on the services that OCB already provides, that I feel like we would actually expand service, still address this population, the needs of this population, providing them those types of employment opportunities, and actually expand the scale of service that we are currently providing through OCB if we actually operated this program out of OCB rather than through sanitation. And the reason why is because I'm looking at some of the related expenditures, which is already built into what OCB's doing through a number of their contractors. So I just, you know, I just, I want to provide that context for you to, and Paul, I mean, you know, and if the CAO and others want to chime in, I'm happy to consider that, but that to me is what I'm still grappling with because I feel like we're helping to fund an expansion of something that already exists through OCB right now, and we're actually paying more for frankly, what I think will be less in service. I think there's a way for us to deliver the same intended goal and actually expand our scope of services while utilizing OCB as our vehicle to do so. So that's, I'm just, you know, I think we're still talking about the same thing. I'm just trying to help make sure that, you know, when we give, when we talk about the limited scope of resources that we have, our ability to expand the service to the citizens of Los Angeles would be met through this existing structure without the duplicative costs that are being provided for here. And that's my recommendation, just because I feel like we're still addressing the needs of that population, still providing that opportunity.
To administer through OCB.
Right, so that's my.
Maybe we get the CAO's perspective on that?
I mean, we could look into that if you, I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like, do we want to still use, I'm not clear, do we still want to use Chrisless or do we want to?
Yes, no, I think we use Chrisless, but I think.
But have it administered by OCB?
Correct.
In fact, maybe, Ms. Rodriguez, very open to that idea, maybe we, if we move this forward and we adopt the recommendation, CAO, we add the recommendation to do cost-benefit analysis between doing, you know, between the two ways of doing that. And that would then carry to budget, and that could be, that's a legitimate budget question, because we as the policy committee would be putting our stamp on it, saying we want to see this type of program move forward, but we want it to be cost-effective.
Right.
And we make that as part of our direction, which is to give us, when it goes to budget committee, to have the analysis in terms of which method of administration is more cost-effective.
Sure.
Ms. Rodriguez, would that?
That's great.
Satisfy that?
Yep.
Okay, then. So colleagues, what I'm going to suggest then is we receive and file the CAO's May 18 report, adopt the recommendations in the CAO's November 8, 2018 report, adding on the additional instruction that Ms. Rodriguez just mentioned, which is as it moves to include in the budget committee's report, a cost-benefit analysis of having OCB administer in lieu. Is that clear?
And having that discretion.
And also an additional direction to ask the CAO to reach out to the coalition to clarify any issues that are out there. Is that correct, Mr. Ru? Okay. Seeing no objection, that will be the order, and that's the order. Thank you. That's item two. Now, the next item we're going to take up, and I want to thank the chief, I know you're here, and there are literally fires out there, not in our city, but they're out there. We want to make sure we take you up next, if you don't mind. But in order to do that, we also have, we just got a bunch of public comment cards, and we can't take up the item until public comment has been held. The last item, public comment was closed on, but this item and future items we have, well, it was listed as three, but I suspect two of these are the same person, so I'm going to call up for multiple comment card commenters, Mr. Herman first. Mr. Herman? You have two minutes to comment on the items that you signed up for, except item two has already been resolved.
So as we have been informed, the fire department has done a great job with the fires. That's not the issue. The issue is whether or not Jose Wezar's agreement with the Los Angeles County Metro Poli, just call it Transportation Nigger Metro, has the policy and procedure for maintenance of a public right-of-way. Well, first of all, who in the fuck authorizes Jose Wezar to call the shots nowadays? I am the FBI. I am larger than large. When you abuse your administrative authority, Mr. Wezar, you have nothing to say about Metro.
Sorry, this has to be regarding topics in front of this committee, this Public Works and Gang.
This is the Brown Act. I am the legislative body here today.
This is.
And with my remaining time, I demand.
Mr. Herman, this has to be on items in front of this agenda.
On a public right-of-way.
It's your final warning.
So as long as Wezar puts his chinchero wetback shit on my sidewalks, I don't have a safe place to walk.
Last warning.
This is a Brown Act violation that you do all the time, Bob. I'm not picking on you today, Bob.
You've got 25 seconds.
I am the FBI, Bob, remember that. So again, when it comes to a public of ways of a public right-of-way, the only way I know is that Jose Wezar is a way for fucking up this city with the FBI investigation.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Spindler. And I forget the names, doesn't show what, you had a couple of names you signed up under, but go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, fortunately, we don't sign up as Jose Wezar, nobody wants to be him anymore, no. So, let's see here. To all of you FBI agents watching the meeting, thank you so much. So number one, the FBI opposes the putting of Cecilia Cabello, AKA Caballero, on the Board of Public Works. The last thing we need is another puppet being indicted. No, put her out there. We don't, we have four commissioners, Kevin James is doing okay. Oh, did you know, by the way, all you cops here, that Kevin James used to be a former federal prosecutor, so he's probably your snitch. I'd look into that. Now we get to number three, proposal for graffiti abatement. Jose Wezar not being here is abatement of graffiti, yes. See, when you do a good job, we're the first to say so. And the FBI came in here last Wednesday and abated the graffiti known as Jose Wezar, and we thank you for that. And we will continue to see further abatement of trash. Trash like Jose Wezar. Scum like Jose Wezar. Dirt like Jose Wezar, yes. And you don't have to be afraid, you don't have to be afraid to work here at City Hall right now with all of this positive weed abatement taking place and getting rid of, oh, look at this, the fire department. Now, come on, guys, you have to stop setting those fires, okay? Now, your jobs are safe, we won't tell anybody that you do that, and the reason you do it is job security, that's right, job security. Fuck Jose Wezar, 42 U.S.A., fuck you.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify, the next person is Goats, but I'm assuming that that was you, Mr. Spindler? Yep, no, that's you, you can't go twice, your goats is not a real one, we'll strike that. Okay, we're going to move, that is all the multiple speaker items.
No, you can't talk.
We will now move to item, where is the one? Item number five, where the chief is involved. So we're going to jump to that out of respect for our fire chief. Mr. Espinoz, would you please read item five into the record?
Item number five is a report from the city administrative officer relative to the Innovation and Performance Commission, innovation fund funding for the early intervention treatment program for the Los Angeles Fire Department. This was also referred to the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee.
We have our, chief, it's up to you if you want to lead this off or have a CAO? Ms. Swan?
No, I'm Bianca Swan with the Innovation Performance Commission, and I have our president, John Merritt, with us as well. And we're here to introduce the innovation fund item for early intervention treatment, which is Los Angeles Fire Department, for $350,000. The aim of this pilot is to reduce workers' compensation claims and injuries by providing treatment to firefighters for minor aches and pains before aches and pains become serious issues. I will turn to the fire department to present.
Thank you, Bianca. Good afternoon, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here today, and I wanted to be here to express my support for this very important pilot program. Currently, annually, we have $52 million a year spent on work comp costs. Something Councilmember Buscano said struck me when he said, sometimes you just have to try something new. We've tried all the old patterns to try to address this issue, and we have had some success, but I think we have to look at it from a different perspective, outside the box, if you will. Firefighters, along with police officers and military, are being recognized as tactical athletes. The fires that occurred and are occurring as we speak, the brush fires, sometimes you pull our firefighters out of a fire station and sometimes they're pulled out of bed at 2:00 a.m., and then within five minutes, you're fighting a brush fire or a structured fire. That type of job causes injuries, and 80% of our work comp injuries are soft tissue. We think by having a tactical athlete approach where we have a clinic for our members to get care before it becomes an official work comp injury may reduce the amount of injuries and the cost of those injuries. I asked the risk management section, and many of the members are here today from the fire department, to look at other fire departments who have tried this approach. And we've seen San Diego and Denver and San Antonio had various levels of success, but it equates to hundreds of thousands of dollars. Our goal with this pilot project is to achieve a 5% reduction, which equates to about $2.3 million per year. So I strongly support approval of our pilot, which comes to a cost of $350,000. If it is successful, as measured by the metrics we've defined, we will ask that this item be included within our regular budget ask. So I'd like to, if you're willing, let the risk management chief make a short presentation.
Absolutely. Please, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, honorable committee. I'm Robert Takashida, I'm in charge of the risk management section. With me today is Captain Adam Brandos and Captain Ryan Hammond, and they'll be assisting with today's presentation. Back in 2015, the fire department went through an audit of our workers' compensation program by the city controllers, and within that report, it identified that the fire department needed an injury and illness prevention program, a wellness program, and to also implement strategies to reduce injuries. As the fire chief has alluded, our goal is 5%. Within the audit report, they've made a recommendation of a 2% reduction in claims, which would equate to approximately half a million dollars. As we're aware, in 2017, the mayor put out his executive directive 18, a safe and healthy workforce, which keyed in on improving employee wellness and a reduction in workplace injuries as well as the liabilities. In 2017, Chief Torazas informed the mayor's office as well as the city attorney's office that 95% of our department's liabilities are associated with workers' compensation costs. So with that, I'm going to turn to Captain Brandos and Captain Hammond for the remainder of the presentation.
Good afternoon. In order for us to address a lot of these workers' compensation costs and these injuries, as the fire chief had mentioned, 80% of those being related to soft tissue or musculoskeletal, we've drawn a connection to athletes. We've already explained a little bit about what the tactical athlete concept is, but making that a little easier to understand, just look at our regular collegiate and professional athletes or at a high school level. They're asked to maintain a certain level of physical performance to compete a task or a job or a sport. In doing so, they themselves sustain minor types of injuries throughout the course of their work or through their practice or through the game. But they have access to athletic trainers in order to curb or stop that progression of minor injury becoming more significant or more severe. They also have that additional education and prevention built into their programs to help keep them physically fit and keeping them to where they're able to participate in their sport, just like we're trying to keep our membership able to serve the community and the citizens of Los Angeles. So to do that, we'd like to establish this injury prevention unit. A portion of that funding would allow us to bring on a captain, one of the management analysts, to set up this injury prevention unit. What we're looking for is an injury prevention unit to establish this pilot program. The pilot program is designed to have an athletic trainer at a specific site, and we've already allocated Frank Hotchkins from Royal Training Center as a location where we'd like to start the pilot, to where we can have members from the field, our recruits in our drill tower, go in and receive voluntary care for these minor injuries before they cross that line of indemnity claim. An indemnity claim being that when they enter that work comp arena. So we want to catch these minor injuries before they become something more severe. And we all know that when we have a minor injury, we start to baby one side of your body over the other, and that causes more issues, especially in our line of work where we're asked to perform these tasks at immediate need, and a perfect example of that would be this brush fire. We've had well over 100 firefighters locally within the city of Los Angeles participating in this campaign. It's easy to say that a lot of those members have these minor injuries. Now, if we had a facility where they can come through and start addressing them early, we're hoping to stop that cycle. The population base that we're looking at is approximately 1,000 members. We estimate about a 40% participation, and that's through talking with or speaking with other agencies that have operated such programs. Within that 1,000 members, we're looking at four battalions, Drill Tower 81, and then our downtown administrative assignments. So on average, one claim costs about $40,000. If we're able to reach that 5% goal where we come up with that 2.3%. If we're able to reach that 5% goal, where we come up with that $2.3 million savings, which is just a reduction of 58 claims. So, if we could reduce those 58 claims within this first year, those are the types of results or the type of return on investment that we're looking at in moving forward the program.
Great, thanks. Let me start by saying, you know, the Fire Department has been incredible about taking advantage of the innovation fund, in a very good way. I mean, more than any, any department, you guys have come up with, with innovations that really fit in line with what the fund is about, and, and you've taken it and created programs that start out, the way it's meant to be, start out as an innovative idea, and then ultimately get baked into the budget if appropriate, which is, which is the idea. We're always wary of proposals. We don't want to be, we don't want to be the budget committee funding something that just didn't get funded, or we should normally go through that. So, that's always a skeptical eye that we all use. And frankly, the first time I was looking at that, I was a little skeptical in that sense. I appreciated particularly the way you framed it, chief, in terms of that it really is a, it's a, it's a pilot to test this idea, and then ultimately, it would be something, if it's successful, that would be part of a, a future budget request. The program that was overseen by a fire captain, is that, does that fire captain have experience as a trainer, or why, why is, why is it necessary to have it overseen by a captain?
Good question. Thank you for that. Captain Hammond is here with us at the table, and he'll talk about some of his unique qualifications. But let me preface his statements by saying that over 90% of our department's sworn. And to make a change in our organizational culture, I think it's important to have a sworn member oversee the pilot. That would increase the chances of success. I think in this case, we have to be very careful about members, their, their work comp rights being compromised. If they have a sworn person who's the, the face of this program, ensuring them that that's not the case at all, this is preventative treatment before it ever becomes a work comp injury. This does not prevent a member from seeking care for a work comp injury. That's why I think it's important. And then to have somebody with his qualifications adds more credibility to the pilot. So, I'll turn it over to Captain Hammond.
And, and just related, that do other cities also have a sworn person, a fire chief overseeing it, or do the other cities do it differently?
There's some form of liaison, uh, some form of liaison between the athletic vendors that they use. A lot of them use, they outsource the athletic jobs, because we don't have athletic trainers on the Fire Department. But there has to be some sort of liaison between the, the vendor and the people that need the help, the sworn members of our department.
Good afternoon. I was introduced to this program. My background is that prior to joining the Fire Department, I received a bachelor's degree from Gonzaga in exercise science or kinesiology, and then went on to get a graduate degree in sports and fitness management. And during that process, I served as an athletic trainer for multiple sports teams. And I'd like to reiterate, a lot of the programs around the country now that are, that are in athletic training have switched to this, this tactical athlete type of role, and starting to work with military, police, and firefighters in a regular capacity. So, I have a little bit of background in that regard. And in addition, within our department, I've worked in the last several years within our drill tower, working with the recruits and changing our fitness model. And the proposal that we're talking about that would coincide with that culture change of fitting more of a functional, dynamic movement that we've never really done before, or it's newer in the Fire Department. And so, we'd like to bring that to the rest of our members in terms of not only identifying some of these injuries before they get to the workers' compensation rate or realm, but then add in the educational piece, the functional movement type of strategies to help prevent these injuries from happening again. So, I think that's why it's important to have a face, somebody within the Fire Department that can work with whoever we tend to bring on board in the terms that are the experts in the athletic training realm.
Ms. Rodriguez, some other questions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, I, well, part of my question is, wouldn't this require these members of our department to self-elect to seek out this service? And aren't these, aren't some of the services that we're talking about here already covered under their healthcare insurance that provides them the opportunity to, you know, seek physical therapy for some of those ailments? So, how do you, how do you get to a point where, number one, they identify themselves as needing this as a precautionary method before it gets to the degree where they file for workman's comp? And, you know, again, how does that, are we potentially creating more liability by providing this service and then not seeking their own medical professional?
Thank you for that question. The plan is to, to publicize it with a communication for myself. I send a weekly message to the field on various topics. This will be one of those messages. And in that message, I would inform our membership that the union, UFLAC, and the Chief Officer Association support this pilot program. The private insurance piece is for injuries not sustained while on duty. This project is focused only on injuries while, occurred while on duty, or we call it IOD. So, there really isn't a conflict between private medical insurance and the program that we're proposing. If this program doesn't fix the ailment, they're still free to make a workers' comp claim and get first care, as is our standard practice.
But there are, if I'm not mistaken, there are preventative therapeutic resources that are available and covered through the healthcare insurance, correct?
There are cer- certain services that are available. They're not intended to be IOD type of services, but I know that one of the plans offers chiropractic services. This, I think, supersedes that. It's a larger scope. The magnitude of what we're shooting for, if we achieve 5% reduction, we're saving $2.3 million. So, I don't anticipate there being much conflict between that type of, of benefit versus what we're proposing.
And on the metric, one of the metrics is to see how many are we electing? I mean, how do you identify, or they have to self-identify as having these types of soft tissue, you know, kind of early detected types of injury, correct?
Absolutely. This is a purely voluntary program. Words getting out in the field, because I did talk about it a couple of weeks ago in one of my messages, and this morning, I was asked about it at the union hall. So, the, the words on the street that it, that it's an innovative program, as was previously stated, we have had a lot of pilots in the Fire Department that have gone on to be successful thanks to the Innovation Commission, and we anticipate this one will be successful as well.
And on, you know, I know in the drill tower, with the physical agility trials and things that they are engaged in, is this an option that is also going to be available to those new recruits?
That's one of the six metrics that we're measuring, is our recruit retention. We lose recruits for a variety of reasons, but one of those reasons are injuries. And many of these injuries, they're nagging type of injuries. Our recruits don't want to get care, because they don't want to be eliminated from the drill tower. And when they don't get the care, the injury becomes more severe, and then they're gone, perhaps forever, if it's a type of injury that would prevent them from coming back to the Fire Department.
Right. And that's, I, that for me, I think, it gives me more comfort level to know that it will be accessible to the recruits, because I think it is, you know, it's the introduction to the drill tower and the pace at which they're now exposing themselves more consistently, in particular for the women recruits. I think this is going to be a very valuable opportunity for them to help potentially mitigate any injuries that would perhaps push them out of the drill tower. We want to make sure that they're actually, you know, given every opportunity for success going forward.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Mr. Riff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment that this is great use of the Innovative and Performance Commission Innovation Fund. This is something, $350,000 seems like a lot of money, but with the potential savings that you could have by just reducing 5% by $2.3 million, I think this is, is a pilot worthwhile doing. I look forward to seeing the outcomes of this pilot project, because even if we could achieve half of that savings, I think it's something worth expanding, and whatever we could do to prevent workers' compensation is something that we must pursue. So, thank you for thinking outside the box on this, and I really look forward to the, how this pilot project turns out.
Thank you. A couple of questions about the metrics. So, how are we gonna measure the success? Is there a control group, so few people we are not gonna allow the option, or are we just gonna, you know, how are we gonna factor out the other things to understand the impact of this program on the hopeful decrease?
Yeah, but we're, we're not anticipating a control group, but the metrics are identified on the front end, and there's six of them. If you'll allow me, I'll go down the list. The first one is recruit retention. The second one's workers' compensation claims filed. The third one's workers' compensation costs. Fourth one's number of days employees are out of work due to an injury. And the fifth one's cost of backfilling for the employees while on workers' compensation leave. And the last one's the employees' compensated time off usage. So, I'm sure that that's gonna evolve as we start this program to see, maybe there's something that we can do to improve or add a metric. But at the end of our pilot program, we'll have a definitive baseline of information to determine, did this work or not? The bottom line for us is that the cost of this program has to be equivalent to the reduction of workers' comp costs. And anything on top of that is, is a bonus.
Well, but, and then somehow, and I'm sure there are ways to do this, you have to remove the confounding factors of, you know, whatever happens in drop programs, or, you know, all the other things. I know we're attacking the, you know, workers' comp on multiple levels in terms of trying to limit our liability, and this is one of several things. So, you know, how do you attribute the hopeful success next year to this program versus some of the other fronts in that battle that you, that, that we're waging?
Yeah, this is just a part of a menu of options that we're gonna use. The bottom line for me is the return on investment. So, if, if we save more than we spend, that is a definitive number. The other value on top of that is that our employees feel that they're being well taken care of, and that's an intangible that we can't quantify. But between the two, I think we can come to a conclusion how this program would relate in comparison to the others.
Yeah, I think that, that's gonna be the tricky part. I just ask as, as we move forward, to figure out ways to, to segment the impacts, because you are doing a lot of, a lot of good creative things to lower that rate. And we're, you know, unless we're, we're very careful in, in our metrics, we're not gonna know which one of these factors is, is succeeding or, or not succeeding.
That's a good point, and, and one way we can look at it is that the population of our employees is, is being drawn from three battalions, and the drill tower, and our headquarters. The remaining 11 battalions are not participating in this, so that's another way to have a control measure.
Yeah, so that, that is the control group, so to speak?
Yes.
How long is it gonna take to hire the necessary positions and secure the vendor for the pilot?
Well, we have the captain, who I believe is already detailed there. The management analyst staff is working on that as we speak. We should have that done within 30 days. The location has been identified at our training center next to Dodger Stadium. The space has been allocated. And then we have to select the athletic trainer company. And I would hope that could get done within 60 days. I don't have a, a definite timeline for that piece, but we'll try to expedite it.
Okay. Colleagues, any additional questions or comments? I'm gonna then recommend that we adopt the recommendations in the CAO report. And without objection, that's the order. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate your support.
All right, now, we're gonna jump back. Cecilia, you've been very patient. We have an appointee to the Public Works Board, and normally, we would, we would take you first. We had two intervening issues that we had to deal with, and we wanted to make sure that the chief, the chief and his team got out of here right away. But that makes, that does not mean it's any less important, and we are very thrilled to have you with us here today. I guess I should start by, Mr. Espinoza, could you read that, this item into the record, please?
Yeah, item number one is communications from the mayor and city ethics commission relative to the appointment of Ms. Cecilia Caballo to the Board of Public Works.
Ms. Caballo, welcome. We're excited that you're here. If you could just share with us your priorities as a commissioner and, and what you hope to, to bring to this position.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Councilmember Rodriguez and Rue, and thanks to Team Blue and Field for your support during this process. And of course, thank you to the mayor and to Chief of Staff Ana Guerrero for the opportunity. I am very excited to first and foremost to work with all of you, with all the council members and the mayor's office, on doing the most important core mission of the board, which is equitable services, equitable delivery of services to our constituents. I come from the council. I began my career here 13 years ago, so constituent service and that face-to-face interaction is gonna be and always will remain my priority. I would also like to think about how we, and it's been mentioned earlier, how we retain our workforce, how we recruit new workers, as we are looking at losing a good amount of folks to attrition, how we use our programs like local targeted hire, how we use women in untraditional roles at, at the bureaus, and how we also work and create a pipeline with our community colleges as well.
Well, you're, you're no stranger to us. We, we appreciate it. Mr. Riff?
I just want to thank you for your service, and you didn't have to, but you came down to my office. We met at length, and, but we meet all the time, and, and you've been in this building longer than I've been in this building. And it's, it's very fortunate that we have someone like you sitting, your willingness to sit on the commission. So, we're very blessed, and I just look forward to continue working with you. It's not working with you again, look forward to working with you, but continue working with you. So, my office is very excited, and, and we can't wait till we put you to work.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you. CC, it's, we're looking forward to having you in closer proximity to us and service on the Board of Public Works. I know you're gonna do an outstanding job. And since Mr., since Mr. Buscagno's not here, you have no problem. I'm joking.
You sure you don't have a question about Machado?
Inside joke, inside joke. But, but anyways, now, we're really all looking forward to our continued work together to help make sure that the most critical services in the city of Los Angeles are met through the Board of Public Works, and we're just delighted. I'm delighted to see your appointment.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, we all know you well. We know you've done great work for the city. We know that you'll, you'll continue that leadership with the board, and without objection, we will move your, your nomination forward to the city council, seeing no objection. That is the order. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You got a fan club out there already. Barely started. Okay. Colleagues, I'd like to take items seven, eight, nine, and 10 on consent. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a comment that I need, so I'd like to take items seven, nine, and 10 on consent. Seeing no objection, so ordered. I guess we could take item eight, the one public speaker comment, which is Ms. Claus? Ms. Shaw Claus, are you here? Ms. Claus, is not, he let the record reflect. Claus has been called and is not here. So, public comment for item eight has been satisfied. Colleagues, I'd like to take item eight on consent, seeing no objection. Item eight is also approved on consent. That takes us back to the top of the order, where we have completed items ones, one and two, and we'll move to item number three. Mr. Espinoza, if you would read item three into the record.
Item number three is a motion from council members Blue and Field and Martinez relative to an overview of the forthcoming request for proposal for graffiti abatement and community beautification services.
Great. We'll bring Paul Roach to the table. Last time we heard, this item was for a six-month extension of the current contracts. It was clear we needed to hear another update prior to the release of the RFP for the next contract term, and that is why you're here. So, welcome.
Thank you. Paul Roach, Director of the Office of Community Beautification. I think, as everybody's aware, OCB contracts with 12 nonprofit, community-based organizations, and one privately-owned company based in the city of Los Angeles, which provide various services to the communities throughout Los Angeles. These services include litter cleanup, weed abatement from long to public right-of-way, tree planting, tree maintenance, bulky item pickup, and most significantly, graffiti removal. Last year, OCB contractors removed over 28 million square feet of graffiti from approximately 439,000 locations across the city. Beginning this year, on July 1st, state-mandated prevailing wage requirements have been placed on all OCB contractors. This did occur with no increase to their budgets. So, in order to comply with the prevailing wage requirements... So in order to comply with the prevailing wage requirements, contractors now must pay their actual graffiti abatement field workers $43 an hour to meet the state requirements, or may claim an exemption by having their employees supervise the work of community service workers as opposed to performing the work themselves. This creates a situation where graffiti removal is either more costly or less efficient. And overall, on a citywide basis, comparing the period of July through October 2018 to July through October 2017, the amount of square footage removed is approximately 22% less. OCB has been working closely with Bureau of Contract Administration and Local Painters Union to create a program that would lessen the impact of the prevailing wage. This would entail a new graffiti worker's classification by the State of California Department of Industrial Relations, which would go along with creating an apprenticeship program for graffiti removal workers employed by OCB contractors who may be interested in moving into the various trades. The new job classification is proposed to pay around $27 per hour, including benefits. So this is more than they were making last year, but significantly less than the current prevailing wage amount of $43 an hour. At this point, this is still in the proposal stages. Nothing has been formally agreed upon, and no determination has been made by the Department of Industrial Relations. It was and still is the goal of our office that these issues can be worked out so that OCB will be able to release a request for proposal that accounts for the new wage determination and allows bidders to have an understanding as to what is required of them as part of the apprenticeship program. If at some point in the next month or so these issues are not fully fleshed out, OCB does still plan to release an RFP for community beautification services in January of 2019. As mentioned, OCB contractors also provide litter cleanup, weed abatement, and picking up of discarded items from along the public right-of-way. Last year, these contractors cleaned over 8,000 locations, filling and disposing of over 118,000 trash bags full of weeds and debris, and picking up 12,000 bulky items from along the public right-of-way. The plan is to break the RFP into two this year, so there would be one specifically for graffiti removal, and the other one would cover the other community beautification services, such as public right-of-way litter cleanup, weed abatement, tree planting, et cetera. We're hopeful that things will be firmed up with the Department of Industrial Relations prior to releasing our RFP so we can give any potential bidders a fairly reasonable idea as to what their labor costs will be and what's expected of them in implementing the new apprenticeship program. But again, as stated, we do want new contracts in place for the fiscal year beginning next July, so we are looking at having an RFP out with the new year coming up.
Explain the two contracts. How's that working again? And you're saying because you have the new category for graffiti abatement, but not for the other issues? So will those, the non-graffiti element be more expensive? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the way that the states determine the prevailing wage, any of our work is covered by prevailing wage, but they've made a determination that graffiti removal should be tied to the wages of a union painter, which is approximately $43 an hour.
So the other, the other aspects then are not affected?
They, well...
So is that why you're pulling, you're pulling that one out because that's the only one that's affected? Or that's the only one that we have a solution to?
Well, the other ones, the other work, there's a prevailing wage weight that rate that is approximately what's being paid already, $17, $18 an hour. We're simply proposing that because we get a lot of other community beautification services kind of ongoing, that rather than do them all in one RFP, that we have one strictly for graffiti and the other one for things such as tree planting, litter abatement, because there may be contractors that wish to bid on just graffiti and not the other stuff, or vice versa, some that may wish to bid on litter cleanup but not graffiti removal.
Right, and the state law to create the new category already passed, this is just the promulgation of the regulations that you're dealing with, which is the unknown. Is that correct?
Right. We're trying to get a determination where they create a new classification called graffiti worker that would, you know, be less than the $43 an hour, but yet would still be consistent with the prevailing wage.
Okay. And then, another issue, when we heard this contract extension, we raised concerns last time about jurisdictional issues specifically related to the LA River and the bike path at Balboa Park. Will any of those concerns be addressed?
So the bike path at Balboa Park and all bike paths within the city are actually under the jurisdiction of Department of Transportation. OCB contractors have never gone into the bike path areas to do graffiti removal. At one point, my understanding is that DOT was utilizing a landscape contractor from General Services to perform that work, but that has not occurred for quite a while. We can certainly look at, you know, including bike paths in the upcoming RFP, but, you know, at this point, with the prevailing wage issue and not knowing what the future budget holds, it would be difficult to add new locations, you know, new responsibilities, without also increasing the budget of the contractors.
So there's no way to get them engaged in that?
Well, I'm not saying there's no way, but, but I, I think especially this year, where they're already struggling and already facing a 22% deficit in the amount of graffiti being removed, that to add something, you know, as significant as trying to clean up the bike paths will only dilute the other work they're doing, you know, that they're contracted to do in the communities.
Well, I would argue, bike paths are in the communities, for sure. They're part of the communities. Are there any other differences in the scope of work under this new RFP besides the breaking into two different RFPs? Have we expanded the scope or contracted the scope at all?
Well, the last time when we removed the, when we released the RFP, it was strictly for graffiti removal, and that was in 2013. Since that time, we have added on the litter abatement and weed abatement type of work. So although they've been doing that now for a couple of years, that, that's why we're looking at releasing two different RFPs, because it was kind of just taglined on to the...
You know, I got that. I just made, was there something, I know we broke it up, but was there something else that we were either adding or subtracting, or it's all the services are the same?
All the services are basically the same.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
So how are you distributing the historic budget allocation of what has been received and kind of issued as a singular RFP now that it's being bifurcated? How are you actually distributing, or, you know, how do you propose distributing the budget?
Well, I mean, we do have specific line items. Budget-wise, there is a specific amount set aside for graffiti, and that amount would be in the graffiti RFP. There is a separate line item for the Clean Streets L.A. public right-of-way cleanup, that would be in the other one. And then part of it would also just be not necessarily giving them the work upfront, but getting costs from the contractors, because in a lot of cases, council offices come, you know, wanna throw some discretionary funding in for tree watering or tree planting types of services. In this way, the contractors will have an opportunity in the RFP to present those costs. So when we do get those additional funding sources throughout the year, we can look and then let the council office know, all right, we have four different contractors, these are, this is the amount that they bid that they say they could do the work for.
Right. And I know, you know, I've kind of always been, even going back to my days on the board, a broken record on that, because I know that so many council offices are utilizing their discretionary funds, and it feels very duplicative in terms of what we could already probably find an opportunity with existing funding options that they're getting through some of these, you know, some might have the capacity more than others, but just kind of getting that, having that opportunity to utilize them more effectively and be more cost-effective as to how we utilize these contracts, I think, is very important. My, my only other question is, based on what current budget projections are looking like in the scope of work, how is that actually, this is more budget-related, I think, but just in terms of this RFP, how, how is that looking in terms of what the needs are versus what's being met right now?
So, so we've looked at the numbers, and, you know, we're, we're in the process of creating the budgets, you know, to be submitted for next fiscal year. If the, the new determination is made by Department of Industrial Relations at approximately $27 an hour, then in order to maintain the level of service that we had prior to prevailing wage being implemented, it would be about an additional $1.8 million. If that new determination is not made, and the contractors have to adhere to the $43 an hour amount, then we'd be looking at about $4.6 million. So it's a, you know, it's about a $3 million difference. So we are hopeful that we can get a new determination by the DIR to make it a little more reasonable.
And so even with the Hertzberg, it didn't protect the classification?
Right. All the Hertzberg motion really did was it allowed our contractors can claim an exemption as far as supervising community service workers referred by the courts, which, which in some cases they are doing, but what that means is that the actual employees aren't able to jump out and do the abatement themselves. Only the community service workers are. So we tend to be less efficient and effective that way than if the actual paid employees are doing the work.
All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is it possible for the RFP to include, in addition to the mandatory work, an optional section to deal with some of the issues that Ms. Martinez raised in terms of the Balboa Park and the bike path? Could we include that?
We can definitely include that in the RFP and get costs related to do that.
Right, as an optional, so that we're not making the decision of robbing Peter to pay Paul or any of that, but we are, we're including it as a, as a line item optional element. And that way also, if she or anyone else wants to add funding in for something like that, they'll, it will be, it will be an easy line item to address.
Yes, definitely, we can do that.
I think she would appreciate that, and I think we all would. Okay, that being said, then, seeing no other comments or question, I'm gonna recommend that we adopt the motion with the additional request of having an optional line item amendments, line item options in there to include the bike paths, the LA River, and the bike path at Balboa Park. Well, bike paths, including Balboa Park. That'll cover other members as well. Okay?
Thanks.
Seeing no objection, that's the order. Okay, Mr. Espinoza, where are we now? That we've done three, I believe we have item four. Mr. Espinoza, would you please read item four to the record?
Item number four is a report from the city administrative officer relative to the Innovation and Performance Commission funding for the Zen City pilot, and this is from the Office of the Mayor's Innovation Delivery Team.
Good afternoon again. Bianca Swan, Project Coordinator for the Innovation and Performance Commission with our Commission President, John Merritt. The Innovation and Performance Commission recommends the funding of $78,000 for the Office of the Mayor's Zen City Pilot. This pilot will utilize a social listening tool developed for cities with residents in mind, which can help departments, council districts, and the city as a whole to better understand and respond to the wants, needs, and concerns of its residents. I'm joined with Amanda Dafloz and her team, who will elaborate further.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Ms. Swan and Mr. Merritt. We appreciate the opportunity to be here, and thank you, council members, for the opportunity to present to you all. I and my team, I'm joined by Alex Podlin, who is our data scientist, one of the data scientists here in the city, and Carly Standor, who is the deputy director on the innovation team. We've presented to you before, but just as a brief reminder, we are here as a result of a grant that the city received in 2015 through Bloomberg Philanthropies. Our role is to work collaboratively with yourselves, your offices, departments, and then residents, to help bring about small pilot projects that can then be either provided to departments to launch and perpetuate, or if they don't work, just continue. Or just a reminder on some of the things that we've done with departments. We launched the city's Small Business Portal, and that's now operated by the Office of Finance. We launched the Home for Renters campaign with H-Syn. That campaign was launched in 2016 and then just relaunched a couple weeks ago, actually, citywide. And then just lastly, we launched the city's My Voice L.A. tool with Personnel, which is now being perpetuated by the Personnel Department. We've got about 30 projects under our belt here in L.A., and we've, we've chosen to put this one forward because we think that it stands the opportunity to really benefit not just the mayor's office, not just the council, but really all the departments when it comes to better understanding what our constituents are saying on public, public information. We're publicly, publicly available information, tools like Twitter, tools like Facebook. I wanted to take a minute, so I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about what Zen City is, because I know that having received a couple of questions from each of your offices, there's some things that you all, you all have questions about, and so we've structured our presentation to try to address all those questions. But just to give you a sense of what this, this project really is about, Zen City is a product. It's a product that we're proposing to bring to L.A. in a two-part project, which is what was summarized for you. It's an English portion, so we would be able to better understand sort of the sentiment of what people are saying on publicly available things like Twitter, Facebook, and so forth. And Carly will tell you a little bit more about that. We're also proposing to build a Spanish pilot, and that would allow for the city to really better understand what our Spanish constituents are saying when it comes to things like Twitter and Facebook and a whole host of other publicly available sources. We've proposed to do it over nine months, and hopefully you've seen that in the proposal. And we've also provided you with, I hope you've received, a handout, a one-page handout, and so some of the things that we'll, we'll touch on in terms of what the product is and what it does. We've tried to, you know, highlight there, just in the interest of time, what it is, as well as on the back, two case studies. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Carly, who's just gonna tell you a little bit about, you know, really exactly what Zen City is and, you know, what it does, and recognizing that one of the questions that we received was around, you know, is this something that's going to be taking constituent data that we don't have access to or accessing PII? We'll talk a little bit about that, and then Alex is gonna explain an example from one of the nearby cities of Corona, in addition to, as I said, some of the case studies that you've got on this, this handout. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carly.
Sure. Thanks, Amanda. So as all of you are well aware, constituents and residents of Los Angeles express themselves and share their opinions either directly with the city by coming to open council meetings, expressing public opinion, coming in direct contact with their council offices. But there are a lot of residents, in fact, the vast majority, who we refer to as the passive majority, who are really voicing their concerns on public forums like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor, and it's not always necessarily getting aggregated and reaching the departments and the internal city users who can actually do something about the issues and views that they're expressing. So Zen City is essentially a digital product that combines all publicly available data and displays it to internal city users in a way that would allow them to easily understand the views of constituents. It provides that data in real time, it displays them in a really simple, straightforward way, so that the insights that the internal staff are viewing are really actionable and allow them to hone in on different information, opinions, complaints, or questions. So the benefits of using this tool are that we can ensure that city solutions that we are developing are responsive to and reflective of all Angelenos, not just the vocal minority who may appear at City Hall. Unlike other data or social media tools, this tool was developed specifically for cities with residents in mind. Beyond the major social media outlets like Twitter and Instagram, Zen City can also pull from civic-oriented sites like Nextdoor, but also internal city data sources such as 3-1-1, crime data, even transcripts from city council meetings. So viewing this data and having it on hand will allow us to be proactive about addressing concerns, particularly before they become large issues, and allows us to supplement the existing city data that we have on hand, like 3-1-1. The, the other important thing to note about this tool is that the Zen City's analysis really categorizes items... really categorizes items with the full breadth of a topic and eliminates irrelevant conversations. So while one person might complain about something that's going on in the Hollywood neighborhood and another person tweets something about, you know, the industry of Hollywood, Zen City is going to eliminate that which is not relevant to the neighborhood and the area as an issue. So you essentially have a really deep understanding of what's going on and how people feel about what's going on in the city regardless of where they're expressing that information. So they could be in another state, but they could be talking about something that's going on in Los Angeles. The tool also, as you can see from the handout, allows users to really narrow their focus based on whatever they want. So you can hone in by specific location, a specific trending topic, a specific sentiment, whether that's positive or negative. And then you can also see the subtopics, so you can understand how residents feel about it. For example, if we launch a Bridge Home program, we might see that there's a variety of sentiment that relates to that program, and we can hone in on the different subtopics and understand which ones have positive sentiment, which ones don't. As Amanda mentioned, this would be a two-part pilot. The first would be in English, the second would be in Spanish. This would be the first Spanish product that Zen City would be building, and they would be building it here with LA. There are other cities around the world that have benefited from having multiple languages in a social tool like this. For example, Tel Aviv and Jerusalem, while the primary language spoken there is Hebrew, they also included the languages of English and French. And so when users are looking at the Insights dashboard, whether someone expressed a concern or a viewpoint in any of those three languages, it's all available here in one aggregated Insights dashboard. The users, like I mentioned, would be internal city staff, starting with ITA, the I Team, the Open Data Team. And then as we identify the different use cases, we would work with departments and council offices to get them set up, train them on how to use it, and then set up their own projects with it. I'm going to hand it over to Alex now, and he can talk to you about another city that's used this tool successfully.
Thank you. So early in this process, when we were engaging with Zen City and wanted to use the tool, we spoke to the city of Corona, who were very helpful and highly recommended the tool to us. And one of the use cases that they gave us, we found particularly interesting, was taking a real proactive preventative approach to crime. So using data and tweets and posts on publicly available Facebook groups, they were able to see where were people talking about topics that could be related and could be predictors of potential crime. For instance, looking at where there are parks with concerns about low levels of street lighting. And being able to take all that information and before actual crimes occurred, go and investigate and add street lighting, improve the safety. In addition, also really seeing where there are potential crimes that were not actually being reported. People on social media may be talking about those crimes, and sometimes there may not be much to it, but a lot of times it could be legitimate cases that they now have access to and a way of seeing where that's taking place so that rather than just simply be reactive to what's going on, they can be proactive and prevent situations before they develop and escalate. And so we see in LA definitely a similar use case we could use. But we've, on our initial proposal, have a few use cases. One in particular that is quite applicable, Carly mentioned before, Bridge Home. Using this tool as we suggest potential sites for shelters, rather than have to only rely on what we already know or rely on the feedback of people who show up to town hall meetings, we'd be able to see what, in a particular area, where are the places that people actually are interested in having something like this, having a temporary shelter? And beyond that, what are, for people who may not want a shelter, really what's driving their concern? So you'd be able to say, okay, this particular topic overall, Bridge Home, there's 40% negative sentiment. You could then click on that through the product, and you could see all of the specific categories that really go into that 40%. And you could use that to just more, just be able to approach the situation with a lot more information and not only relying on the opinions of the few people who actually take the time to show up to meetings or are very vocal, but really the whole range of constituencies across the city.
I'm going to suspend for just a moment because I'm going to lose my quorum in just a minute. I want to do a couple of housekeeping things that we need to do while we have quorum. One of which is I've got a call for general public comment. But let the record reflect, general public comment is open. Are there any speakers? There, I don't believe any of them are here. Simboya Wright, Sean Kloss, Red Chiefs FBI, Miss Clowns, Herman, Puppet from Encino. Are any of those people here? Let the record reflect, they are, nobody called has come forward. General public comment is now closed. I also understand from my colleagues that we are okay to take item six on consent. Seeing no objection, we will take item six on consent. That brings us back to item three, which is the last item that has not been done. I'm sorry, item four, which is what we're on, and we will continue. And Ms. Rodriguez has to leave soon, so I'm going to let her start out the questions. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you. So, you know, I want to thank, I know there's a lot of work that goes behind, you know, coming up with some of these proposals and innovation. I just have some, you know, very big concerns in having, and I think my colleagues might also contribute to this, you know, there's a lot of the, some of the very same individuals that we hear from at community meetings are the very same individuals that have commandeered a number of social media sites. And some of my concern is that we're basically creating a platform to troll sites as a government entity, when I think in order for us to validate some of the concerns that are legitimate concerns from members of the community, it really has to be reflective of participation, and we have to work on that continued participation. I can tell you right now, seeing some of the commentaries that have gone on, on social media sites as it relates to a Bridge Home, I think, I think we could already tell you what some of the concerns are. We get that very clearly in messages directed at us via all of the, either through our social media networks, as well as in public, through public testimony. At, I mean, Mr. Rue, you could probably share your experiences with that. I don't think they're very different from any of the experiences that we're having throughout the city. But my bigger concern is I just, I have heartburn over the idea that we are going to be essentially kind of monitoring social media sites to try and derive any kind of input in a way that I don't believe is really reflective of the diversity of the city of Los Angeles. And if I take my district in particular, a district that has a significant digital divide, a district that really requires the level of outreach and engagement in order to seek participation and meaningful input, I fear that this is kind of a bridge way of not really doing the kind of attentive listening and engagement that our departments really are, in my opinion, really are required to do. And I know when I, you know, I just finished launching a safe parking facility. I've got several projects, if we just want to talk about homelessness. I've got several permanent supportive housing and emergency winter shelter programs that are being offered in my district that we went through the extensive due diligence of multiple community engagement meetings that hasn't precluded the kind of negative engagement that occurs on social media sites, on Nextdoor and all of these things. People have found multiple ways of utilizing, same individuals utilizing these various social media sites to project the very same concerns. And those are the same individuals that are participating in many of these meetings as well. So, you know, for me, it doesn't give me greater comfort in this type of technological solution, that it will be something that would be beneficial to us. In a district like mine, I find that it would potentially elicit just further providing the opportunity for the same individuals to kind of utilize these various vehicles as a way to create a messaging that I think is not necessarily always going to be reflective of the broader community at large.
If we may respond, we really appreciate the question and fully understand the concern that you have. I think, maybe just to clarify what, sort of how this fits into the network of technology that the city has. So this is somewhat of a product that sits over all the things like Facebook and Twitter. So it doesn't, it's not another tool like a Twitter or another tool like a Facebook. Rather, what it does is it looks at all the things that are being discussed in the universe of all those things I mentioned. And what it allows you to do is see the conversations that are happening on all those tools. So what other cities have reported seeing as benefit, whether it's departments or council members like yourselves, is that it allows them to deepen their reach in terms of the constituents who are speaking on these tools because it looks at sort of everybody that's mentioning a Bridge Home, as opposed to perhaps those that a department might already know to look at. So if Amanda Daphlos is constantly talking about a Bridge Home, as a council person, you may always be looking at my account and reading me as a person that has an opinion. But if Alex is a person that you don't know of or may be speaking in Spanish, so you can't perhaps see his plus all the other comments that come in in Spanish, it allows you to see both of those things, both the person who, myself, who's always commenting, and Alex, who might never have commented before or not be as known to your office. It's not meant to take the place, certainly of any of the engagement that is so important as city officials. It's certainly not meant to take the place. It's really meant to be one more tool in the toolkit for the city to deepen our understanding of what constituents are saying. So I just wanted to be sure that we clarified, you know, what the product is.
I understood, it's functionality of it. For me, I still don't think, in my particular case, it's really reflective of the, you know, those that would be interested parties having that conversation. I've watched, you know, before this existed, trust me, our staffs and our offices are looking at a lot of these, getting this feedback already through some of these very same channels. And you watch the discourse happen and unfold live for everybody to see, and people getting trounced on each other in very disrespectful environments. They're no different than some of the meetings that we might have engaged in. So it's not, you know, I just, I, I don't know. I am not, I'm not seeing the value of this personally.
Okay. Couple of questions about it. In terms of who has access to the data? Is it any city employee?
No, it's not. So in the pilot, we proposed that it would be super users is what we're calling them. And so that would be the innovation team, it would be the data, the open data team, and it would be our ITA. And the reason why we proposed that is because we need to set the tool up. We'll also be creating a Spanish tool, which by the way is the first Spanish tool that the city will have.
Now, would it not be subject to CIPR requests, Public Information Act request? So if we have this tool and a bridge housing, and there's a bridge housing issue, let's say, and then someone who's, you know, against it or for it or whatever makes that public information request, would we not have to release the data?
I think you would, but all of that information is already publicly available. So it would just be as if they were pulling something from Twitter.
But it would be, it would be that tool. So if the tool, if there's a lot going on in the Twitter universe, you know, everybody's hating on this bridge housing thing out there, whatever it is, but that's often the case when these things come up. And then we're moving forward with it, let's say, for example, and then someone says, well, I want to see, I want to see the Big Brother lens on it. I'm joking about that, but that's one way people could look at it. See, get the Big Brother lens, see what the world is saying through the eye that the city sees it. We would have to then produce that data, correct? That?
I believe so. And speaking with the mayor's attorneys, I believe that we think we would be subject to whatever data privacy rules that there are. But again, because this information is publicly.
It's public information, but we've now, we've funneled it and we've now, we've now created a window to look at that data. And that window, I don't see how, I mean, city attorney could weigh in, but I can't imagine that that would be protected in any way, that that would have to be public if someone asked for it. Is that correct?
Yes. Certainly the data is already public, as they've said, but, you know, we've collected it now. So that collection of data would undoubtedly be subject to disclosure under the Public Records Act. Communications that we've had about that data would also be subject to the Public Records Act. There may be some aspects that would not be, but if all we're doing is collecting information that's already out there in the public sphere, then I doubt any of it would be subject to redaction. Short answer is yes.
Is there any legal liabilities that go along with that? I mean, if we're voting on a project and this window says everybody hates the project, and we move forward with that project anyway, whatever it is, does that create any liability for us?
It's a good question. It's hard to speculate on that. Not that I know of, but, you know, arguments could be devised that we haven't considered yet.
In terms of other cities, are there some concrete examples of how they've used this data effectively?
Yeah. I could offer an example. I think the sentiment analysis piece is also helpful to consider that while people might be putting disparaging comments out there about something that's being proposed, there are also several people liking it or retweeting it. And so the Zen City takes all of that into consideration and isn't just showing complaints. It's actually letting.
I get it. I mean, it's showing positive and negative.
Right. And so for example, one example that was used in Beersheva, Israel, was a lot of residents were coming to council meetings complaining about the state of the streets and how they needed streets, the streets to be fixed or repaired. So the city allotted a budget to go repair the streets. But upon further analysis through the Zen City product, they were actually able to identify that it wasn't an issue with the quality of the streets. It wasn't that they were cracked or had potholes or had issues, but rather people were leaving trash cans or parking cars in the way. And so people who were trying to use the sidewalks weren't able to use them. And so they were actually able to just change some of the rules around how the, where people parked and left items in the street so that people could open up the sidewalks and then avoid having to pay to repair a street that wasn't in fact broken. We've seen other examples where there are, I think in Pittsburgh, you know, they'll note that there's pothole, a new pothole or some sort of tree that's down. And so people don't always know about 3-1-1, but we have this anomaly detection within Zen City. As soon as something goes wrong, the anomaly detection goes off and people are starting to talk about it. The city is able to see that, oh, something is happening in this particular area or this neighborhood. We can go address that right away. We don't have to wait for some sort of formal complaint to be issued and go through a process. We can go look at it right away.
I guess that's where the potential liability comes in too, as far as when are we on notice? Like with streets that are broken, if it's been reported to us and we get sued, we're on the hook for a lot more money. So, and this cuts both ways. It's a good thing. We want to know what's out there. Where it always gets a little scary is when we create tools for reporting, but they don't have actionable items attached to them. I see this as a member of the Budget Committee all the time, where the payout ends up being three times as much because, or 10 times as much because there was a broken sidewalk and there was a contractor that was there 10, you know, 30 days ago about something else, therefore we should have had notice. What I worry about from the legal side, and maybe there's an answer, is that we've got the Zen City thing and people are talking about the broken street, but there's no direct connection from that broken street talk to Bureau of Streets fixing. Then somebody cracks their head on it, they get the public information request, say you hadn't noticed because people were talking about it on Twitter and you have the Big Brother lens, you should have known that, therefore you're liable. It's just a concern. I know it sounds crazy in the sense, but sitting through Budget Committee every week, it's not crazy. That will be an impact. I don't know how we mitigate it, and it's a double edged because we do want to know about it, but we don't want to create a liability. We don't want to, we want to make sure when we know things that we have actionable plans in place to act on that knowledge. in place to act on that knowledge. Because if we just know it, we end up being liable for it.
I think the thing I might, we fully appreciate your concern. And I think to the way that we've thought about this and what's important and required by Zen City is that we have use cases. So these are things that we would be working on with Zen City to actually solve. So as opposed to opening it up and solving for everything like streets and police and so forth, the five use cases that we've proposed through the pilot are the ones that are in the proposal. And so the I know that the IPC approval of this or the favor of it was was understanding that there are five cases that we're we're interested in doing. And so we wouldn't be looking at all those other things. Instead, we would be looking at things like how to better engage individuals in the census. We'd be looking at things like the rent stabilization ordinance, which we've done a lot of work on. So we're trying to be very targeted and specific, fully appreciating that we wouldn't want to open up, as you've said, without without being really thoughtful about the things that we're programming it to.
And when you look at something like rent stabilization, is it, some of the information is without regard to location and some of it is with regard to location? Is there a way, and when someone people are commenting on Twitter, you don't necessarily know where they're from. You know, so if, how do we know if 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 people are commenting on on a project or rent stabilization? How do we know they're from Los Angeles? How do we know they're from the impacted area?
Yeah, that's a great question, Alex.
Sure. Well, if, in the case of Twitter, if someone's tweeting about it and they geolocated their tweets, that's how we would know. For anyone who hasn't, who does not have that enabled, we wouldn't have that extra advantage of of where it's actually coming from. And those that geolocation is then all aggregated to kind of a larger area. So we'd be able to say within this council district or within this census tract, we've we've detected a spike in volume having to do with rent stabilization ordinance. Now, that that doesn't necessarily mean that there's not other people also talking about it, but if they're not, if it's not geolocated, we just wouldn't have that extra advantage.
Most people don't, do most people geolocate their Twitter?
A lot, a lot don't. But but again, we're not pulling just from from Twitter, so.
Do most people geolocate Facebook?
Facebook, yeah, and Instagram. Instagram is heavily geolocated. But also if we're also looking at at internal city data, 311 requests, from there, we would we would we would know the actual address of whoever's complaining about it. And they may be complaining about something that.
But we're not we're not cross checking that, are we? I mean, so if if somebody's tweeting about something, you know, John4027 saying that they hate rent control, there's no way for us to then, unless they use that same handle for their 311 request, there's no way for us to actually.
You mean de- sort of deduplicate?
To dedup it for one or two, to actually know where they are for another. I mean, they could be, you know, like when I when I was doing my legislation on the fur ban, I got a lot of hate from that, but we figured out where most of it came from and it was it wasn't LA. But it took a lot of figuring to figure that out. If we were just doing a survey of the Twitterverse or even Facebook posts, we would have had a very different perspective if we if we didn't hone in on where the where the comments were coming from.
That's correct. So so the individual responses that come in are all redacted for the personal personally identifiable information. So so kind of cross checking that is is a potential concern. As as users, you do have the ability to only, let's say, only look at at one or the other and see how that kind of affects the results. But but yeah, if if someone does not have that enabled, their actual location, it is it is a limitation.
And you said you can listen to the closed forums like Nextdoor?
Well, you can listen to the city's Nextdoor page and the comments on the page. We can't go into individual neighborhoods or anything like that. It's all it's all for whatever tool we're looking at, it's all subject to whatever their own privacy regulations are and what they make available.
So so the Nextdoor app, which is where a lot of the conversations happen, you know, that are that are localized, we can't, we can't listen in on those?
To individual neighborhoods, no, but but anything that's on our comments on on the city's Nextdoor page.
Well, 99.9% of it is happening on on the on the neighborhoods, right? I mean, there's a tiny, tiny bit that happens on our page, practically nothing.
I mean, I right now, Nextdoor, they don't, they just don't make their API available on that level to be able for privacy concerns amongst other reasons. So it's possible that could change in the future, but but currently there's no kind of platforms that that get that visibility into into proprietary data. Now, if it's something that we're collecting on our own, 311, RSO complaints, minutes from a meeting, all of that, we we would be able to to see in greater granularity. But but again, if it's not tied to a specific neighborhood, if there's not an address that comes through in the in the particular complaint to aggregate it, we would have a general sense that the that people within the city are talking about this. And they they make their best efforts to filter out people who are clearly not within the city based on kind of other other use patterns. But but being able to actually go in kind of behind behind a third party's data that's not publicly available, that they they just don't make that an option with the tool because we don't want to, we don't want want to be able to to see that level and we'd see it as an invasion of privacy.
That's true.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, what you pointed out about liability issue, that is a real issue. And, you know, just to add to that, you know, like even our own 311 calls or whatever calls we get or service requests we get in the city of LA, we're constantly always trying to improve and make sure that those requests are fulfilled. And sometimes we have backlogs, right? Especially the bulky item pickups and things like that. So to have additional methods where it alerts us without having the actual funding behind it or the manpower or or behind it could potentially pose a problem. But, you know, earlier, you know, the overall, I'm always supportive of what the commission brings forward because these are all ideas. Some will be very successful, others might not work, but it's always about trying to think outside the box. So in general, I am very supportive, especially what we talked about with the fire and the workers' compensation and prevention. But for this one, I'm a little, I don't know, I'm not as not as excited, not to say that this won't work, but I'm just not as excited. But, you know, a lot of these, whether it's Facebook or Twitter and even our own 311, don't we already have analytics?
We do have analytics, yes. The so ITA has analytics. And I think there there's several things that are different about this tool. And so that's why we were all excited about it, because it does give you the chance to look more broadly, again, as we've talked about. And it broadens sort of the the view of the city in terms of.
So it merges, so it would just basically merge all these different platforms together to give you a different.
Yeah, it merges and it broadens. So you would hear from people you hadn't heard from before. And then it also aggregates everything. So we would be able to see really what everybody is saying across multiple platforms and then what more people are saying over those that are speaking today. Again, we also don't have anything in the city that we that we or really anyone we've talked to is aware of that allows us to understand what our Spanish-speaking population is saying about the city. So unless you've got a Spanish-speaking individual in your office or in a department, this allows us to now and will allow us to to build the Spanish pilot, which we think and others have felt would be a real asset to the city.
Again, I guess proof will be in the pudding and when when we actually see what data comes back. But even when you say broaden, I'm a little concerned about what Councilmember Rodriguez was talking about earlier because it, you know, the the real chatter is going on on the local Nextdoor, right? Not the city's Nextdoor. And, you know, my office gets alerted all the time. And after, you know, constant request, the city now has an opportunity to post information on Nextdoor, but it's a one-way street. We can't read what other people write. We could only post it because there's so much, there's sometimes misinformation that's posted there. But we, that's what probably needs to be monitored. But if we can't monitor that, as well as other private sources, I mean, I don't know how much more broadening of data we would see that we don't already see. So I I don't know.
Yeah, I think in this case, we'd actually broaden so that we don't, we don't only hear from the people who are on the public Nextdoor or going on 311, but people who are not necessarily users of those, just speaking and, you know, warning family and friends or asking questions to family and friends, you know, putting out, retweeting things about the rent stabilization or asking each other questions on Facebook about it. They're not getting caught in our net at all. We're not hearing them or understanding them.
And the Facebook you're talking about, if there are closed groups, like we have a group that's quite active called Crimebusters, now that is a closed Facebook group. So would that be picked up?
So if it's a private Facebook group, I don't think so. But if someone is, you know, is a public page and they ask in Spanish, you know, does anyone know, how do I find out if rent stabilization applies to me? Or I'm getting booted out of, my landlord's kicking me out of my home. If that's a public page, we, that gets caught up in our sentiment sentiment analysis.
I mean, it just, I'm just not sure how, like, with the, we have a couple of these closed groups that are crime-related, like Crimebusters and Tarzana South has a group with about 2,500 people who live in that area. I'm able to get on that as the council person and and hear what people are saying, both for better and for worse. But I get the feeling that that those kinds of things would not be picked up because they are closed, even though like the senior lead officers are on there and but they're technically closed groups. And then the other concern, although I guess it's not necessarily a concern, but something we'd have to watch out for is a lot of times these closed groups become echo chambers and they misinformation or certain sentiments get echoed. And that's useful to know, and that's what this this lens would have, would be knowing those kinds of things, not necessarily acting on them. Because the fear is if we start acting on the irrational echo chambers that happen in particularly in these groups, we we're not going to make good policy. But there's nothing about more information that means we have to act on that information and make irrational policies. More information is good. So I'm open to this idea. I know we don't have the votes for it. Rodriguez expressed concerns as well, and at the moment, we have we have two members. So for the time being, we're going to continue the item because we don't, we don't have the support for it yet. But I mean, but that's not counting it out. We're not, we're not voting no on it. But I think probably have, we've raised a lot of questions here and I think maybe it needs a little bit more more work and we can have some more conversation about it. I'm I'm open to the idea. I also fear some of the Big Brother elements, which we really didn't talk about as much, but I know will be concerns to the public, even though it's all publicly known information. People will be concerned that we will be, you know, whether we use that data and cross, we said we would not cross-reference it with the 311. It's it's a catch 22. If we cross-reference it too much, then we're invading people's privacy potentially. But if we don't cross-reference it, it's less useful to us in terms of knowing who people are and how they are. So we need to anonymize it in some way. But then that also raises issues at anywhere in the process the public can get access to it. We're also dealing with that issue when we start cross-referencing it. So any additional comments that you guys want to, in this forum, talk about and then we can continue the discussion at a later time since we're going to continue it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing that that I would offer, maybe if we invite Alex and Carly if there's anything they want to add, but we've provided a sample of the cities that are already using this. And we have found talking with all of them to be quite helpful, just in terms of what they're doing and how they're targeting the tool as opposed to just using it broadly. They're they're targeting it to address some of this, their city's most important issues. So places like San Francisco, San Antonio, we spoke about an example of Corona.
Well, tell us about, because that was the question I asked earlier and I had the one example in Israel where.
We gave you a couple of examples for Israel, one example from Corona. And then there's, you know, we can send you or whomever it makes sense, additional case studies.
I'd love to hear about that specifically, how how they're using the data effectively and what they're using it for. I think would be very helpful to help us better understand this tool. I think we probably still have a fair amount of misunderstanding about about the tool. It's a very interesting idea, and I said I'm pretty open to it. I just, I know that as a committee, we're not yet ready to move it forward up in good sense of where my members are. But.
Yeah, we're happy to do whatever.
We're not, we're not voting no on it today. We're voting to.
We appreciate that.
Continue it and to learn more about it.
We appreciate that, and we're happy to provide whatever additional information would be helpful. So if it's if it's more examples from other cities in addition to the couple we've provided and then the ones that are on the handout and how they're using the data, and if there are other questions that your staff can feed forward to us, we're happy to provide you with some background.
Great. Any additional comments?
I just wanted to add that this is kind of like the beauty of the Innovation Fund because it provides opportunities for us to test out these type of ideas and examples. And we are able to learn and grow from from them, whether or not they succeed or they fail, there are opportunities to take lessons from these opportunities and apply them to further city solutions. So I'm really grateful that the Innovation Fund does exist to be able to put these type of things on the platform. So I just wanted to to note that that I I understand and respect the concerns and also acknowledge that the Innovation Fund is kind of to be used to test out those ideas that are kind of concerning or out of the box.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. It's one of the reasons I love the Innovation Fund, was was active in its inception and continue to want to see it used in innovative ways. And and this may very well be one of those. We're not, we're not quite ready as a as a committee to move it forward, but but you're absolutely right. That's part of the beauty of this, is we're testing new things and moving ideas forward.
I think, you know, that from my perspective, I'm the new president, by the way. This is my first opportunity to thank the committee and the council for all of your support. But I think that's that's the fundamental idea of innovation. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna bring projects up that work, we're gonna bring projects up that don't work, but the idea is to try them. So I think we can come back with some specific examples of how Zen City is utilized and maybe narrow the scope so you can see exactly what the successes have been.
Yeah, I think doing that would be very helpful, addressing some of the fears that we have in terms of of liabilities would be very helpful, maybe working with the city attorney on on that, you know, as well as some of the concerns about who gets the data and how that gets distributed and who can have access to the data would be would be helpful.
On that last piece, just just like to add that that the underlying raw data itself, even the the users won't have access to with the exception of the actual, whatever the the comment is. And even that, if there's, even if it's public and it mentions other Twitter users, let's say, they'll redact all that information. So so even the few people that are going to actually be able to open the, open the product, login and everything, won't be able to see any of that underlying data. And if we were to no longer continue our contract with Zen City, they purge all that data that's that only exists in the database for the purposes of of classifying.
Okay. We had a very complicated thing with red light cameras and data. We had a very similar assurance about, well, it's it's a third-party vendor and blah, blah, blah. And then by the time it got through the courts, everything was out and all of the protections didn't exist. So it's, it's, there's, there's reason for us to be super concerned and skeptical even of assurances that we get from third parties because, and this is where the city attorney can can try, either try him now or work with you later, because some of it defies rationality in terms of like with the red light stuff about how our data gets out there with the moment that a city, the moment that we're using it, maybe not in this case, but we've seen it happen before, I guess I should say.
So we're happy to, just on that note, you know, sort of bring in the attorneys from the other cities because certainly they've worked through these same concerns. the other cities because certainly they've worked through these same concerns in a place like San Francisco, that's probably the, the closest, you know, both in terms of being in California and size. We're happy to get with them and try to address some of the concerns from a legal point of view.
Great. All right. So-
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will continue this item without objection. And Mr. Espinosa, is there anything else on our agenda?
No, the desk is clear.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.